Hi, everyone. Kelly Beatty coming to you live from the Chelmsford Senior Center for tonight, the third night of our Spring Town Meeting. And, you know, it was a lovely day, an early taste of summer, 85 degrees. I had a choice, did I want to come in shorts and sandals or look nice for town meeting? Well, I'm looking nice, or at least trying to. We're here to discuss the last nine or so articles on the town meeting warrant. As those of you who've been with us up to this point know, we've gone through 12 articles on the town meeting warrant, which includes the annual budget for the town, along with a special town meeting that took place on Thursday night with only one article on it. Now, I would have wagered, if you had asked me at this time on Thursday night, that we might have actually finished town meeting in only two sessions. It's rare to go to three. But two things conspired to make that not the case. The first was that special town meeting, which had to do with appropriating about $150,000 additional in fiscal 2015, which is the one we're in. In fact, the one we're about three-quarters of the way through, for the sewer department to complete their work on the grinder pump assessment that has, they've been taking on the responsibility for that since town meeting approved that changeover. Now, the townspeople, several hundred who, town actually did a lot more repairing than they expected to have to do, and the money ran out. So they needed to come back for $150,000. That in and of itself shouldn't have been that big a deal, except that the town sewer department seemed to be at odds in their conclusions with the sewer pump grinder, the grinder pump alliance, which had come to the conclusion that the town was spending the money way too fast on repairs that in some cases weren't necessary. So that took about an hour and a half of last Thursday night. Then we moved on to a couple of other articles in quick succession. It looked like we were really kind of moving through the warrant very quickly, except that when we came to the town capital budget, that is, the large ticket items that we need to spend money on, it, amount of $3.3 million, which really didn't seem like that much, ended up being a very protracted discussion. The reason for that was that selectman Bob Joyce, who is keeping a watchful eye on the tax dollars and looking for every opportunity to turn more of that money back to the townspeople, filed not one but three amendments to the capital planning budget that had to be discussed in succession, and that took a considerable amount of time, too. So as the 11 o'clock hour came and went, we were still working on Article 12, the capital planning budget. It was finally passed, and now we're moving on to the last eight or nine or so. Now, if you use the parking lot criterion for how contentious the rest of the town meeting warrant is going to be, it should be a very simple thing, because there's plenty of parking places here. That means there are no contentious issues. The tables in back, reserved for citizens, are not full, and I'm anticipating pretty smooth going. I'm going to say 9:30 tops, and we'll be out of here. There's only two issues that I see coming up that might give us some pause for a little further discussion. One is the first one tonight that we'll discuss, which is a reconstruction of a sewer pump, which the town owns on Progress Avenue. It's going to be $825,000. This is a major pumping station. It's an indication of how expensive it's going to be in the years going forward to maintain our sewer system. The other is one of the articles later on. Let me get the number for it here. That is Article 19, close to the end, which has to do with the leasing of the Swain Road landfill, which has been capped for some years now, and to lease part of that to have a solar cell panel installation on top of it. That's come up before town meeting before. It went back for a further study, and we're going to hear the results of that tonight. If town meeting reps are agreeable, it could go quickly, or if they're in the mindset to kind of pick through the proposal, it could take a long time. Now, we have a lot of new town meeting reps this session as a result of the last election in April, and so we're seeing a little bit of growing pains in terms of some of the question and answer. Remember that the town meeting reps are invited each session to a kind of pre-town meeting that takes place about one week beforehand, where Paul Cohen, the town manager, steps through all of the articles, tries to give a sense of what the issues are, answers lots of questions at that time. The fact that we still have so many here, I think, is an indication, as we saw on Thursday night, of a fairly aggressive stance on the part of a lot of the town meeting reps in terms of really kind of grilling the town officials and making sure that they understand things correctly. So we'll just have to wait and see how that all goes. Again, 9:30 is my bet, and then, trust me, I'll be home in those shorts and sandals. So stand by. Chelmsford Telemedia's coverage of the annual town meeting will continue when John Curlin, our moderator, calls it to order in just a minute.
Good evening. It's 7:30. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. There were apparently some problems with people hearing presenters from the center microphone, so Chelmsford Telemedia was kind enough to indicate where presenters or people who have questions should stand and just adjust the microphone so that you can be heard, and that way everyone will be able to hear you in the hall as well as at home. And Mr. Manager, Mr. Cohen, are we ready?
What's the, hey Ted, where's the TV? No, it's not on. Ted, TV?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to test to see if we have a quorum. Thank you.
Moderator, are these supposed to be on?
Yeah, there's an on/off button.
Ted, these monitors aren't on.
It's a very expensive mirror.
Did they try to turn the button?
Power button? Hey, where is the power button?
I have no idea.
There's one on the bottom there.
No, that's a receiver, I think.
Receiver?
Camera better not be on us right now.
Is that a clicker or something?
How'd you do that?
Eric, Eric, Eric goes, Eric goes.
I just put the button on the bottom, right?
Beautiful.
Funny how those things work.
Just think all the on switch.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Mr. Manager?
Article 13.
Now, I'm ready for it.
Okay, Article 13. Article 13 is a request to transfer $825,000 from the Sewer System Improvement Impact Fund for the reconstruction of the Progress Avenue Sewer Pump Station. Many of you may, at this point, we're seeking funding for the Progress Avenue Station. The funding source for this does not come from the sewer rates. It comes from the sewer capacity impact fees in terms of those who build onto the system. And this is another example of the continued reinvestment into our system in order to meet today's flows through the system. As you know, when originally it was constructed, it did not envision the full town being sewed. And at this point, we need to undertake this work in order to facilitate expansion in our commercial corridor. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Now's the time for question and answers. Are there any questions for the town manager on this issue? There being none, does the finance?
David Derry, Precinct 6. Now, you're saying that, the moderator, that this was one of the original pumping stations?
Yes.
And so what is the age of the pumping station?
The what?
What is the age of the pumping station?
Well, 27 years old.
27 years old.
Yeah.
So now, you're saying that it's going to be paid by whom?
It's, the funding for this project comes from fees that have already been collected for what's known as sewer capacity impact fees. So for example, when the Stop and Shop Plaza, Marshalls Plaza, converted to a higher extended sewer usage, they have to pay an impact fee into the system. And so that's how, another way of funding the impact and increased flows in the system.
My other question to you, because I had looked at this earlier. I was looking through the budget book. I didn't see a line for the sewer system impact fund. Is there a line in the budget book?
No, because I mentioned earlier, that is distinct from the Sewer Enterprise Fund, which again, Sewer Enterprise Fund collects the revenues from the users of the sewer system to pay for its regular routine operating costs.
So that wouldn't be?
This is, this is external to that. This is the capacity impact fees by people who basically put capacity into the project.
I have one other question, although it's not directly related to this. I have a question that the other evening I never did get to ask, but I'd like to ask.
Well, well, is it related to what we're?
Well, it's related to the sewer department.
Well, no, we're only talking about this particular project, Ms. Derry.
What I'd like to know?
Ms. Derry, is it related to this particular item? You certainly can talk to the sewer department on your own time, but this is town meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there anyone else who has any questions? There being none, does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee unanimously recommends this article.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen recommends two in favor, excuse me, three in favor and two opposed.
Thank you. Now's the time for discussion. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Moderator, CM Chase, Precinct 1. Through you to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. What was the recommendation again?
Board of Selectmen recommended approval, three in favor and two opposed.
Okay. Could we have the rationale for the opposition?
Sure. We have one of the selectmen who voted against here, one of them is not.
The reason I was opposed to it was because I couldn't get a straight answer on if there was any money that was going to come from the 40B project that's located very closely to this pump station. In fact, if we don't improve this pump station, they couldn't build. And when I asked the question, the DPW director got all hot and heavy on me and.
Well, let's not make conclusions. Why don't you just state to the facts?
Well, well, it's a fact. It was televised, so that's the reason I voted against it. I want to see the 40B contribute to this, and I can't get a straight answer on it.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to answer.
Please identify yourself.
Gary Purst, KETI, DPW Department, Town of Chelmsford. Bob, that wasn't the question you asked me. You asked me point-blank if I was building it for the 40B. So my answer was that we don't build anything for anybody but the town. If you want the answer to your question, at this point in time, there is no one that's come down to the sewer department to find out what the impact fees would be. When they come down, they will be given the number, and if it's them, they will pay like everybody else. So yes, there will be money if there is a 40B. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't quite.
There's nothing before you. Do you wish to argue?
You want to respond to it?
No, there wasn't a question. If you wish to speak, you can go to the microphone like everyone else, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Chase?
Mr. Moderator, CM Chase, Precinct 1. Through you to the town manager. I thought I heard the town manager talk about the funding for this, where the funds would come from. Did I mishear something or didn't hear something?
The funding source of this is from the Sewer System Improvement Impact Fund, commonly referred to as capacity impact fees.
All right, that's what I thought I heard. Thank you. Now, let me ask.
Which have already been collected, not prospective.
Right, exactly.
It's money on hand.
Another question, Mr. Moderator, through you to the town manager. If the 40B project were not in existence, would this work have to be done anyway?
Yes, and I'll invite our town engineer, Steve Yonley, to answer, because there are more than just the, a potential 40B product that are being impacted by the capacity at the Progress Avenue Pump Station.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Yes, there are, aside of the 40B project, there's also two recent approvals through the planning board. Oops, sorry. There's two recent approvals through the planning board in the district that flows through the Progress Ave Pump Station, and there's the possibility of, you know, what you hear. Granted, until anything comes before planning board, you don't really know. But there's the potential for two or three, possibly four, other projects. There's also the Center Water District Treatment Plant off of River Neck Road that flows their discharge to here. They have talked about a possible increase in their discharge to this system through the treatment for the drinking water. And there's also some changes in regulations for cooling water for manufacturing purposes. And as you know, where this pump station is located, it's all commercial industrial. So through the manufacturing process, that cooling water, instead of being discharged to either the stormwater system or other means, has to now be discharged through the sewer system. That's a change in federal regulation. So that's additional flow to this station. As well as just capacity issues, there's other issues with this station. It's 27 years old. The generator is outdated. The electronics are outdated. The cabinet the electronics are in is not, no longer weather tight. There's only one wet well, as you remember, as this body should remember from the Mill Road discussions. With only one wet well, it is tough to clean. This project will add a second wet well, so we have capacity to swap back and forth for cleaning purposes. Full new structure, the standard that all the other pump stations in town are built, with the small shed looking building to house all the electronics. So I hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Mr. Joyce?
Could I ask the town?
Please identify yourself.
Oh, yep. Bob Joyce, 103 Turnpike Road, Precinct 1. Could I ask the town manager to let us know what the actual amount that is in that account before the 825 is withdrawn?
The amount from the town accountant is $933,000.
Wow. So we're running it down pretty low, then?
Yes, and as we said, it will build back up as additional projects take place in the community.
I was on the sewer commission back when these were being built. Am I to understand that every single sewer station we built, like Raymond Road and all the others, are going to have to be replaced? Because that wasn't what the intent was early on.
Eventually, they'll have to be replaced because they'll age out. I mean, the, as you said, this one is 27 years old. You know, there comes a point in time where everything has to be reconstructed. So eventually, we will be updating the system as time moves on. But these are the two, the one at Mill Road last fall, and this one right now, the two critical ones.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're in debate?
Yes, Mr. Latina.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. I went to several ZBA meetings with some other residents and town meeting reps to try to defend the neighborhood against a massive 40B. In fact, a four-story building on the top of Mill Road, above the old, older folks might recognize it as the Apollo Building there. Also, two additional three-story buildings. And one of the, one of the items discussed quite a lot was the sewer capacity. And the sewer capacity conveniently was at 100%, perhaps because of all the extra industrial things that have not moved into there recently. A lot of buildings closed, so I'm not quite sure where all this extra sewage is coming from. But for 27 years, there was enough capacity there. But apparently, we moved ahead that, the Progress Pumping Station project, and I'm sure it had nothing to do with Princeton Properties wanting to build this massive, now 108-unit rental apartment complex like you see at each intersection up and down the corridor. This is a 40B. It was supposedly a friendly 40B to allow this property to be built. It had to put a sewer system in. We're doubling the capacity of this sewer system that supports my neighborhood, Jesse Road, Turnpike, Warren, that direction, I believe, goes into this system. Mill Road is supported by it, which is an industrial area. And one of our concerns was if, in fact, this pumping station, we were told it was 24 years old, but I'll take the new number, assuming that ZBA was told something else, if each one of these pumping stations needs about $1 million at the end of its 24- to 27-year life, we need to start saving a lot more money for our sewer system, because if you're going to double capacity and you're going to replace these things every 24- to 27 years, we've got a bunch of them that need doing. I think this was more designed to allow the building of this property, and you'll soon see it on the top of the hill, almost from the ground right now, you can see the 15th floor of the building at Fox Hall, if anybody knows where that is in Lowell, or the Wang Tower. You can see about halfway through the Wang Tower standing on the ground. Picture 50 foot more on top of that hill. That's what Chelmsford is in for. And we're going to complete some other additions on 129 if we are allowed to change the zoning there as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Chris Garahan, Precinct 8. I would just say that I think this article, we need to pass this, it's a reconstruction that's necessary, and I think that's a reasonable action we should take. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Andy S. Lynch, Precinct 7. Simple question. I know the $800,000, we have the money. As we go forward, is this going to affect the sewer rate that I pay next year or the year after?
No, there will be no immediate impact for this project, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? There being none, we shall vote on the warrant article. Article 13, an affirmative vote is to appropriate $825,000 from the Sewer Improvement Impact Fund for the reconstruction of the Progress Avenue Pump Station. Final vote is 123 for the article 15, opposed, the article passes. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 14 is a request to increase the amount of the senior citizen property tax work-off abatement program from $75,000 to $100,000. Currently, we have 150 senior citizen participants in this program that is basically administered out of the senior center here. The participants can earn $500 from property tax rebate by participation in this program. This program is funded by the overlay account, which is the amount that's set aside for the payment of abatements and taxes. If this program is passed, the overlay account will remain unchanged. However, if the same number of 150 people participated in the program, then their earnings could increase from $500 to $650 per year. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there any questions for the town manager on this warrant article?
Thank you. Nancy Arroway, Precinct 1. Just a simple question. How many senior citizens do we have that want to participate in this program?
I believe we have no waiting list. So we, what happens is under the program, you can earn up to $1,000 or so into the program. What we've done as a community is we've not means tested it, and we've basically gone it wide rather than tall. So in other words, rather than increasing the amounts, we basically have included more people in the program. So that's why I made the statement, is if we had the same 150, then we could, we, participants, we could increase it to 650. If more people participate, then obviously, then that amount would go down. If fewer participate, we could allow them to earn more. But there is no waitlist.
What percentage of the average property tax bill does that $500 represent?
Well, the average property tax bill is $6,300. I don't know what the average elderly person's property tax bill would be, but obviously 500 out of 63 is less than 10%.
Thank you.
Claire Gignac, Precinct 7. I almost forgot. Paul, does this language in this article still require that you come back every year for funding for this program?
No, no, this, what this is, this authorizes the increase to $100,000 per year, so we don't have to vote this every year. It would basically, that would be the new threshold for the program. So every year, we include the funding.
So it will just get built into the calculation of the levy?
Of the overlay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Which is based out of the levy, yes.
Paul Regazio, Precinct 7. Currently, a person can work, what, 60 hours at roughly $8.50 an hour? The 850 will stay the same?
Right. The way, under the provision of state law that governs this program, the town cannot compensate the seniors greater than the minimum wage.
Okay.
Now, the minimum wage, as we're well aware, didn't, did go up to $9 this past January 1st. It's scheduled to go up to $10 on the 1st of the upcoming year, and then $11 in Massachusetts in 1117. We obviously can't go above that amount, so again, we, you know, we also want to value their effort and time. We're not required under mass law to pay participants in the program minimum wage, but I think we tend to do that as a matter of respect for the program. And what we find out happening is a lot of people participating in the program will go to their earnings level, and then will continue to volunteer to assist the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? There being none, does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The finance committee unanimously recommends this article.
Or does selectmen have a recommendation?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Now's the time for discussion. There appears to be no one to discuss this matter, so we will vote on this. An affirmative vote is to increase the community action program from $75,000 to $100,000. The final vote is 137 in the affirmative. One no vote, one abstention. The article passes. Article 15.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 15 is a regular article that. Article 15 is a regular article that comes to town meeting. This is the transfer of $50,000 from the sale of graves and lots by the Cemetery Commission to fund the improvement and development of the cemetery. And in speaking to Dave Boyle, our Cemetery Director, just to let you know the type of projects they're working on, they're working on an 80 space columbarium at Fairview Cemetery. They're doing a GIS mapping of the cemeteries. The one at Four Fathers is completed, so one can go over to Four Fathers Cemetery and with an application on a smartphone device, can actually find and locate the individual markers. So in the future, by doing more cemeteries, it sort of will address the major constraint for people is where do I find certain graves and so forth? And that you'd have that technology available to, much like you have in your cars and smartphone devices to locate, find locations. They're also repairing wrought iron fencing at Pine Ridge, and they also need to do some paving at Pine Ridge. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Now is the time for question and answers. Does anyone have any questions regarding this Warren article? There appears to be none. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Now is the time for discussion. Does anyone wish to discuss this article? There appears to be none, so we will now vote. An affirmative vote will be to transfer $50,000 from grave and lot sales to a fund used by the cemetery for improvement and development. The final vote was 140 in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. The article passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 16 is a periodic article the town meeting. This funds the Community Action Program. We come when there's a need for funds at a $10,000 level. This provides funding for community projects such as scouts and other programs that benefits residents in locations in Chelmsford. The fund has been around since 1997. There have been, to date, over 80 projects completed at a value of over $89,000. Some contemporary ones are the effort that's underway currently at Harmony Park, Varney Playground, and Eagle Scout Projects, as depicted. So, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there any questions for the Town Manager on this article? There being none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Okay, now is an opportunity for the town meeting reps to discuss this. Is there any discussion? There appears to be none, so a vote will be to appropriate $10,000 to the Community Action Program. Final vote is 136 in favor. No opposition, and two abstentions. The article passes. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 17 is the annual article regarding the Community Preservation Fund. This appears at every spring annual town meeting. And in essence, it's the boilerplate article in which the committee, under the provisions of the Community Preservation Law, sets aside 10 percent in this year's amounts of $95,000 to each of the 10 required statutory reserves, that being open space, preservation of historic resources, and community housing. And then the balance is submitted towards a budget reserve. The other component of this article is setting aside funding for the debt, $50,000 for the administrative expenses of the committee to enable it to facilitate projects during the course of the year and run its administrative operations. And lastly, the other component of this article is to fund debt service on previously approved projects. And that's what's listed in the motion. And just to remind folks, the projection for this year is we anticipate that the town will collect $943,000 under the surcharge, and that the estimated state match would be $250,000 for almost $1.2 million. You can see the setting aside, as I mentioned earlier, the $95,000 or 10 percent of the town amount in the three reserve areas, and 150 in the budget reserve. And just to refresh people on the products that we're paying for that have been previously approved, the first one is for the bond payment on the two Town Hall projects. The amount for this year's debt service on that is $355,600. We also have the bond year, for the 10-year bond on Sheen Farm. This year's payment is $101,900. We also have the bond service for the Chelmsford Woods Project, which is being constructed on Littleton Road. That debt service for the upcoming fiscal year is $151,000. We also have the debt service on the Varney Park Playground improvements that have been awarded and are underway. This year's, I'm sorry, the turf fields is $118,000, and the Varney Park Playground amount this year is $1,6291. So that lists all of the articles under the debt service for this project. So in summary, there are no new products being brought forth at this town meeting. What we're doing here is setting aside the required 10 percent amount for reserves and paying the debt service on previous projects, as well as the traditional $50,000 administrative fee to allow the committee to address issues that may arise during the course of the year. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Are there any questions for the Town Manager?
I feel like I'm on Jeopardy or something. Maria Karafellis, Precinct Two. Through you, Moderator, to the Town Manager. On those bonds that we have, are we watching the rates? Can we adjust those? Can we reapply?
No, through you, Mr. Moderator. Those monies have already been borrowed.
Okay.
And they're at fixed interest rates, and we're not in a callable period.
Okay.
So that is the amount. And fortunately, because of the town's bond rating and the low interest rates at the time, you know, we're paying around 2- to 3 percent on these notes.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for the presenter? There being none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of this article.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Is there any discussion on this article? There appears to be none, so we will vote on Article 17. An affirmative vote is to fund the Community Preservation Committee's plan. Final vote is 140 in favor. No opposed, no abstention. The article passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
Okay, we are requesting no action to Article 18. This was placed as a placeholder by the Community Preservation Committee to put additional funding in the capital improvement fund. And at the time of town meeting, there was no need to take such action. So there's no action requested under Article 18.
Yes, Article 19.
Article 19 is request for authorization for the town meeting to authorize the Board of Selectmen to entertain a lease for the Cap Swain Road landfill site for a solar energy farm. It would be for a 20-year period. How we arrived at this point is the town was able to obtain a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources to do a technical assessment of whether it was feasible financially to put a solar farm on the Cap Swain Road landfill and then bring it out into the grid. And the reason that was necessary is because we do not have three-phase power going down Kelso Road or Swain Road. The study was completed through the supervision of the Public Works Department with our energy manager. It was determined that it is financially feasible to do that site. The site is basically 16.76 acres. It would be a 20-year lease period in which the town would issue bids for the site. It would then be competitively bid, and then we would award the contract to a private solar developer, who would then be responsible for obtaining the permitting and constructing, and then selling the electricity from the site. The estimate from the engineers is that it could, the capacity would be about 750 kilowatts of electricity could be generated from this site. There would be no conflict with the proposal to provide access to the Oak Hill area, which is the conservation land that's adjoining this. So that was also determined, that there would be no conflict. It wouldn't preclude that effort from going out. Nor would there be any conflict with the town's salt shed that's over on Swain Road as well. The town met with, and I met with, and George Dixon and others met with the residents at Scotty Hollow to update them on the proposal. And we met with their board of directors. We also sent notice to all the abutters along Kelso Road who abut the site to inform them of what was taking place. We did that a couple months ago, so again, there'd be plenty of time to inform them. They understand the proposal. We brought our plans to them. And matters such as this, to show them a depiction of how the site would be constructed. So in essence, that's what we're seeking if the town wishes to utilize this landfill for that purpose. Otherwise, the landfill will remain fallow, and the Board of Health will continue the monitoring for the cap landfill. We estimate that in this market, we could probably get about $20,000 a year in revenue as a lease payment from the town for this project. Also, the Board of, the purpose of taxation is allowed under Mass general laws. So that's what's taking place with this project, is seeking whether the town meeting wishes to authorize this use at that site. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Glenn Thorne, Precinct Five. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Town Manager. How is this site going to be secured? I remember we had this conversation once before, but I'd like to hear it again.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The town has two things. We have a bylaw that requires screening for the site. And then the developer is going to basically put fencing around the site in order to secure their asset. And that's not any town expense. Again, we are just going to be the lessor who will be issuing this out. So what would happen is, is the area would be screened, as well as fenced. There also, they could entertain, if they wish to choose on their volition. There is additional open space area at the Rod and Gun Club that could allow for the site to be expanded. But again, that would be a third-party transaction between the developer and/or the Rod and Gun Club if they wish to do that. But basically, it would be fenced in, but that would not be at the town's expense.
Mr. Moderator, to you, the Town Manager. Was there any consideration of cameras so that the police department could at least keep an eye on the site?
Yes, that could be done. But again, that would be at the developer's expense, not the town's expense.
Mr. Moderator, to you, the Town Manager. Is there, there are a number of different varieties of leases that can take place on the site. Have you decided on the transaction agreement that you would think would best fit our town?
Well, again, we want to keep this simple. Basically, we want to give them a 20-year authorization to use the site and make us a fixed payment for that 20-year period, and that's it. We don't want to be riding the market or anything else. It would just be a fixed 20-year cost. That's how it would be competitively bid, and then we'll see what the results are.
So whoever "they" is, is a result of a competitive bid?
Yes.
Tom Nukon, Precinct Nine. Mr. Moderator, through you, to the Town Manager. Paul, you mentioned that the Board of Health is responsible for monitoring the conditions on the site right now. Do you anticipate that as part of this lease agreement that the leaseholder will then be responsible for those expenses? Or will we still have to maintain them?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. No, the town would still have that responsibility to continue the monitoring of that site. When we were doing these plans and analysis, we did bring Richard Day into the process to make sure the Board of Health was fully apprised of what we were doing.
All right. And do you anticipate that the lease proceeds that we'll get will more than offset the cost of the monitoring?
It's roughly about, yes, it would.
All right, so the land will at least pay for itself, is what you anticipate? Thank you.
Bill Martin, Precinct Four. Through you, Mr. Moderator. $120,000 or $20,000 a year was the...
$20,000.
$20,000 would be the revenue that the solar company would pay to the town?
Exactly.
Okay.
And the reason for that is that we are not taking the power off the site. So we already have green power. We have a raise on all the schools, and we have our power earlier from Bolton Orchard. So what we're doing is a straight lease transaction, where the town would receive $20,000.
Mentioned possible tax revenue. I know that in the residential field, solar energy is tax-exempt, Mr. Chase. So is that, would that be different for us on this project?
Again, the solar energy is under, as you said, special provisions under the Mass general laws pertaining to enhance solar development. As I said, we will tax it to the extent possible under those provisions.
Do we have anybody already who wants to do this? Or are we trying to figure it out among several bidders?
We believe that there are bidders out there. As many may be aware, the federal incentives on solar power expire in 2016. So there's a big initiative now to bring sites online. There's also the issue of the state cap, which is being worked out at the legislative level. And so we anticipate that this thing can be done within the next 12 to 18 months.
Okay, and finally, it sounded like it would be a level-term lease, 20 grand, 20 years. And I'm sure there was consideration given to making that and escalating
Right.
over the 20-year period? Is that...
Right. What we would do is, we would ask for bids for a 20-year period, and we would take the present value. So if somebody wanted to come in and do an escalating, they'd do that. But what we would do is, we'd do a present value of the lease to determine which is the highest lease for the property.
Okay, thank you.
Pam Armstrong, C6, Scotty Hollow. Just a couple of questions. Will this cover the entire landfill?
It will not cover the entire landfill. Because of the gradations of it, we tried to depict it in the area that's shown, that's out there, and that's sort of that screened area that's there. We have other access and such. It's not going to affect the access road and so forth. So it's really in that mid-area there. And again, they'll be placed, you know, within the slopes that are allowed on the site.
And the dark spot on the right-hand side, is that the transfer station?
That's the salt shed.
Okay, where would they be putting the transfer station to convert the power?
That would be for them to put, to submit plans on where they wish to locate it. And it really comes down to where they wish to leave the site. The highest cost, the conservative estimate, would be to come out through Swain Road. There are other possibilities that they could go through private property, but that would be up to them negotiating with the budding property owners. And again, that's why we don't depict it. That would be up for them, the third party, to do as a transaction.
Okay. And I know a lot of the homes on Kelso look down on this site. Is there any glare off these panels?
The panels will face a southerly direction. We're not aware of any major glare issues in terms of the screening that is up on Kelso. So we're not aware of that being a major problem.
And the transfer station or the conversion station, does that make any noise or have any alarms on it?
They are all regulated. We're not aware of that being a problem in terms of the use of these sites, in terms of any kind of a hum or problem. But again, anything built would have to comply with the town's noise ordinance as well, which is measured by the Board of Health in terms of sound from the site, in terms of ambient sound levels.
And there is a bylaw at the planning board level that this would go before planning board, and it would have public input at that point?
Exactly.
And the access to the site, you're proposing Swain Road?
It would be Swain Road through the town's entrance to the site. That's correct.
All right, and then who's getting the benefit of this power?
It would basically go back to the grid. They could, as the developer, could entertain private contracts with either other municipal entities, such as the Housing Authority, or another community in the National Grid Service territory, or they could go to a private parties and seek to sell there. So again, we leave that up to the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Luntan, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, the property itself is on a, what we call a brownfield?
No, it's a closed capped landfill. It's not a brownfield site. It's a capped landfill. The Commonwealth has had an incentive program in place to locate solar arrays. They give an incentive to put them on either brownfield or landfill sites, rather than using farming or other land that would otherwise be used. So this is not a brownfield site. This is a capped landfill site.
And it has vents coming out of it?
No, no, we do not have methane coming from the Swain Road landfill. So there's no methane gas.
I thought I saw a smokestack coming out of the top of the pile, so there's no vent.
No.
In the event that government subsidies stop for this solar power, and it's no longer economical, and the business entity walks away from it, are we going to put some hold-aside money in the event that happens so that we can take this stuff off or maintain it or whatever we need to do with it?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, through the moderator, there is a performance bond requirement. So the event that the industry changed, you know, not only would the investors then be held up, but there would be a requirement for a performance bond to remove the equipment from the site.
So we would be holding, it's only twenty thousand, would we be holding a percentage of?
We hold a bond from a surety. We don't actually hold cash. But in essence, if it did go belly up, then we would go to the bond company, they would then provide the funding to have the site cleared.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, to you, to this presenter, Thomas Fall, Precinct Five. Are there going to be any other, any buildings built on this property, or is it just the solar panels?
Just solar panels. Like you see when you drive down the highways or other roadways, you just see the solar arrays built on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis Sheehan, Precinct Four. You mentioned tax revenue, but you didn't really give it any number whatsoever. You have any idea what type of additional tax revenue we can get for all this equipment that's there?
It's not a whole lot of money. As was noted earlier, the state provides incentives for green energy. So that's why we're not throwing out a number. You're not talking to tens of thousands. You're not talking tens of thousands. It's probably small.
So this whole thing, you might get twenty thousand a year?
Well, no, we anticipate twenty thousand on the lease payment. You could be talking twenty-five at best or so. It's not a huge thing because of, again, the state's incentives and federal incentives to provide an alternative clean energy.
Sure, and twenty years down the line, we'd still expect to get twenty or twenty-two thousand or something, yeah?
Yeah, that would be part of the agreement signed up front.
Anyone else have any questions? There being none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Now's the time for discussion.
Pam Armstrong, C-6, Scotty Hollow. I want to thank Paul and the Selectmen and the group that they did bring to Scotty Hollow to go over this with us. And we are pleased with all the answers that they gave us, and we support this article.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? There being none, we will now vote on whether the town should lease the Swain Road property landfill for solar purposes of a solar lease.
So a very positive and quickly moving set of discussions here on the proposed leasing of the Swain Road landfill for solar cell development. We don't have a potential bidder yet for that property, for the lease on that property. But from what I've seen recently, there should be no shortage of bidders. And I think the town meeting's vote reflects that optimism as well.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Can you please allow the presenter? Thank you.
Article twenty is a request for town authorization for the Board of Selectmen to require a roadway easement at the corner of Bill Ricker Road and Wilson Street. You can see it depicted there on the map in a little bit better illustration than we had in that colored in your book. It's right at the, right at the corner. If you were coming down Wilson towards Bill Ricker and were taking a right, we need to round that corner with curbing and so forth. Several months ago, the Public Works Engineer, Steve Yonley and Gary Persketti, met with the property owner to discuss this last fall. We were in agreement. There became some concern when they sort of saw the illustration that was in the book earlier this week. They met again, reviewed it, and everyone agrees on this is the depiction that's there. And the reason obviously for this is to make sure that the turning radius is wide enough. And why this is a critical intersection is, as you know, if you travel down Chelmsford Street towards Bill Ricker Road, you cannot take a left-hand turn. So there are LRTA buses and others that go down from Chelmsford onto Wilson, then go right towards Summer Street and so forth. And so the effort here is to cooperate with the neighbor. The town will bear the expense of putting in the curbing along the roadway. And then it will have a defined and well-maintained area. And then obviously, the property owner has his driveway concerns, and the good news is that we're in concert with this project. And so we ask for your approval of this article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the presenter?
Maria Karafelis, Precinct Two. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Town Manager. Mr. Cohen, did anybody contact the guy that owns the other corner? He's got much more land.
The answer to your question is yes, and I'll ask Steve Yonley why it's not, he can explain why it's not feasible to go towards the other corner. But he can, we've looked at this, we've looked at this intersection for several months. Obviously, we're also bearing in mind with the new fire station and so forth. It just doesn't work on the other side. I don't know if Steve wants to elaborate anymore on that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I guess on the other side of Wilson Street, on that corner, the back of the sidewalk is more or less the edge of the right-of-way. So if you're thinking in terms of shifting the road or anything like that, there's no real room to do it on the other side either. All the improvements on the other side, what you see there today, are within the town's right-of-way. It's just on this particular corner, the resident had his property surveyed and realized at that time that he owned five or six feet out into the street, just on that small corner. So in talks with him and things, we decided on going forward with the easement. That way, you know, public traffic isn't constituting a trespass across his property.
Okay, now, I know originally, there was a, the markings or the land amount that they were taking was like nine feet? Or, can you explain to me? And then I know that it's been reduced. So how much are we actually taking? How much are we actually going in on his property?
Well, again, it's just an easement, so we can pass and repass. It's still his property. The easement that we've gone back and forth with since the fall, as it sits today, and final approval is with the Board of Selectmen. They're the ones that ultimately authorize and sign off on the easement. It's currently forty point four feet, or square feet.
Okay, and what was it originally?
We had forty-nine.
All righty, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any more questions for the presenter? There being none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has taken no action on this article.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Now's the time for discussion. If anyone wants to argue in favor or opposed. There appears to be none, so we will vote. An affirmative vote is to allow the town to acquire an easement for roadway purposes at the corner of Wilson and Bill Ricker Road. The final vote is one hundred and thirty-eight in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. The article passes. Article twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article twenty-one is requesting authorization for the Board of Selectmen to acquire a drainage easement at twenty-four Linwood Street, as depicted on the plan on the screen. Linwood Street is located off of North Road as you pass the center, heading out, you know, from the common. Many of you may be aware, this was a matter of litigation with the property owner a couple of years back, where the dispute over the town's work in the easement area, or the proposed easement area. Since that time, that litigation has been resolved. The property owner has signed the easement documents. And therefore, the final phase to resolve this matter is for the town meeting authorization, and then the Board of Selectmen's approval, and then this will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. So the easement areas have all been surveyed and designed. And again, it will just continue the practice that the town has at this location. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Now's the time for questions. If any have any questions for the presenter? There appear to be none. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has taken no action on this article.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend approval.
Thank you. Now's the time for discussion. Is there any debate on this? There appears to be none, so we will now vote on Article twenty-one. An affirmative vote will authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire a drainage easement at twenty-four Linwood Street. Final vote is one hundred and thirty-eight in favor, no opposition, one abstention, so it's unanimous. Article twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The final article, Article twenty-two, is for a town authorization for a street acceptance. And this, the year where we have for your consideration the acceptance of the layout of Bittersweet Lane. You can see, the Bittersweet Lane is located off of Jordan Street, which is located off of School Street on that side of town as you head towards Stony Brook. The road has been reviewed by the Planning Board. It meets their subdivision design and approvals, and I'm sure shortly we'll hear their recommendation. It meets all the requirements for a roadway. The reason for accepting this, obviously, is not only does it beat the, meet the standards, but also, if you notice in the photo, there's a public park that was constructed as part of this project. And therefore, the rationale is that if people are accessing the park, they should access the park by public way. So we ask for your approval of this article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Now's the time for questions and answers.
Mr. Moderator, Pat Magnell, Precinct Eight. I have a question about the connection of the name and the configuration of the street. It's shown on the plan as being a T. And the reason I am asking why it appears that way is that if you went up to Jordan and you walked to the end of Bittersweet Lane, you would see a street line, a street sign intersecting Bittersweet at a ninety-degree angle called Lynch Way. The photograph you see actually shows the development there halfway completed. We now have four houses that all have street addresses called Lynch Way. I believe the assessment records show their addresses as being Lynch Way. So I guess I'm kind of confused. I want to know what happened, what happened to Lynch Way? And is, is that little piece at the end of the T still part of Lynch Way, or has somehow it become part of Bittersweet?
I can answer that question.
Sure.
This, you basically said it yourself, this is just a photo illustration. Bittersweet Lane does come in straight, and for the approval, the street, the T as you will, that is Lynch Way. So when you come, when you turn off of Jordan, when you're driving up Jordan, that's, you would turn onto Bittersweet Lane.
Right, but the little piece that intersects Bittersweet at a right angle?
Yes, in the back, that's Lynch Way. That's a private street.
Right, okay, so we are approving Bittersweet, but not Lynch?
Not Lynch Way.
So this, there's a little bit of a disconnect here between what we're approval?
Yep, not to interrupt you, but that's just a, nothing but a mere photograph. If we put the street acceptance document up there, it's awful busy, there's a lot going on.
Okay, now I have one other question. I remember this development from its origins back in two thousand and four. And originally, I believe only part of Bittersweet was supposed to be public. I actually have a plan that goes back to two thousand and four, which we got, which showed it that way. And if you drive down Bittersweet right now, the widest part of it goes up to the entrance to the ball field, and then after that, it narrows considerably. So that's, but that narrow part is still going to be approved?
No.
Okay.
As was, it's public to, as you drive up Bittersweet, it makes like an S-turn.
Right.
Just after that S-turn, then it becomes private.
Okay, so we're only approving the part that goes up to that?
Just to the ball field entrance, as the Town Manager stated. Through the, the project was approved through Planning Board, not to get into specifics, but back in two thousand and four. And it was all supposed to be private, but as part of the approvals for the project, there was the construction of the parking lot. And I can't have public people, as we just saw with the roadway easement, driving over private property. So it was determined at that point to accept the road roughly two hundred and twenty feet in, so that you would access the public parking lot via a public road.
No, I remember that well. And, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the picture is not necessarily what we're approving.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any more questions for the presenter?
Tom Newcomb, Precinct Nine, Mr. Moderator, through you, the presenter. Has the developer met all of the conditions for developing this road properly so that we can accept it as a town street?
There are currently two outstanding items. There's two trees to be replaced. There's bond money still with the Planning Board for that. That is, I always hold, the Planning Board's policies to hold a minimum ten thousand dollars. There's seventeen thousand and change in the bond. So once the trees around the parking lot that didn't take get replaced, then we can, well, final sign-offs. And then the final step in the process is an administrative procedure with the Planning Board to release the funds.
Okay, so, am I correct that even if this body approves this tonight, it still will not be accepted until it meets all Planning Board requirements?
Yeah, the documents wouldn't be filed.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the proponent? There being none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee has taken no action on this article.
Thank you. Did the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Does the Planning Board have a recommendation? No? Yes?
Yeah, Planning Board recommends approval.
Thank you. Now's the time for discussion. If anyone has any discussion on this warrant article? There appears to be none. So we're voting on the last article of the evening, Article twenty-two. An affirmative vote is to accept Bittersweet Lane as a public way. Bittersweet Lane. Did I say it wrong?
On this overwhelmingly positive vote, there are a couple of abstentions. Maybe there's some conflict of interest out there. The abstentions actually don't show up on the tally board, so it's, oh, yes, they do actually. I see that now.
Final vote is one hundred and thirty-five in favor, one opposed, one opposed.
Final vote is 135 in favor, one opposed, one abstention. The article passes. So I will -- I have no announcements, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh.
Thank you very much. Look forward to seeing you in the fall.
Well, we hardly had time to drink a cup of coffee from the Boy Scouts, and town meeting is over. That took just an hour, which is very tidy. I think it sort of underscores the fact that with a little bit of different circumstances, shall we say, we could well have ended last Thursday. But we went through a number of articles quickly tonight. As you saw, these are the ones that tend to be sort of housekeeping articles. They appear every time, every year at this time. It does set the stage for some interesting dynamics at the Fall Town Meeting, which will be coming up in October, because there remains issues of free cash. We haven't really seen yet the sum total of what our snow removal costs have been. That's usually something that is going to be a very large number. It's the one, as I understand it, it's the one expense that a town is allowed to roll over into the following year. So with that, and other issues involving the school department, yet to be determined the spending there. A new superintendent is coming. It is going to be an interesting summer here in the town of Chelmsford. Maybe not hot like the temperature, but certainly simmering. So if you've enjoyed or have comments about our town meeting coverage, I encourage you to let us know. You can either call the station at (978) 251-5143, or drop us an email, studio@chelmsfordtv.org. Of course, you'll be able to see this in its entirety, if you'd like to do that, by streaming from our website, chelmsfordtv.org. I want to thank all of our volunteers and staff for putting in these three long nights. Now we've got to break it down and get ready for the next production. I'm Kelly Beatty for Chelmsford Telemedia. Thank you so much for joining us. Good night.